The work session for August 13th and the roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Commissioner Mum? Mayor Neely?
Here. Any discussions about a future agenda item?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, one suggestion that we talk about is putting on our webpage of the Legacy Project, a virtual tour. Is that something that's in the works?
You know, that, I forget which community conversation we were at, and there was a request to see if there was a way that we could, you know, we have quite a few pictures, but if there'd be a way to video anything, and we don't have that in the contract right now, it was a good idea that I was going to look into to see if it was something that staff can do and what the quality would be of it. You know, we wanted to also have a conversation with the trustee, just from a security standpoint, what he was comfortable with. So, we did receive that request, and so we're kind of trying to, we're looking into that as an option.
And then the second one is doing, while we're doing the work, gathering our information on ideas for everybody, if we would look at doing an education session for the public on historic preservation and how it would apply to this site.
I don't know how it will yet.
Well, just the general guidelines of what we've got there. So people, I think a lot of people aren't even aware of what is there. No, other than a lot of pictures of old buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What I heard from, I mean, we heard that suggestion of the tour at the CIC meeting, and I think a lot of that had to do with all those historic buildings and wanting to actually see those. Is that, is that kill two birds with one stone if you're doing a, kind of a historic presentation of what's in there? Is that, is that what you're looking for?
Well, just so we can do some public education, because I don't know how even, how clear I am even on, you know, what is historic preservation as it applies to that spot? And, and what the guidelines are that we're looking at, you know, whether they're national guidelines or historic district guidelines or...
I guess I was just going to say, you know, we, we do have all the work that we did and the due diligence on the inventory of all the buildings as probably a starting place, and then I think Christina had a thought.
I think there's two pieces to the puzzle. One, you know, what can we do on our website to extract a lot of the information on the historic buildings that we already have in a more user-friendly manner? And I think that, that I'd love to look down through this process. And I think the second question of how can, can the individual buildings be potentially adaptive reuse or historically rehabbed, is in this next phase that we're talking about and through this master plan envisioning strategy. So it's kind of like the facts at hand and then the tools we can use, kind of this two different thing. And the second part, we'll see as we go through our analysis. But I think the first part of trying to pull out all the existing information that we have on the buildings through our existing documents, that's something I do want to do. And what we're going to be moving forward this next month is highlighting a lot of the existing documents that we did last year on our website, kind of each week, like, did you know, we had a catalyst report prepared last fall that talked to like the catalog value of rehabilitation will highlight that document? And one of the documents we'll highlight is the historic assessment report.
Oh, good, okay. And so, will you, when you're going through this second phase, will there be a portion where the public will be invited to address that historic portion?
Well, I think that the tools and the toolbox and how to best implement the four core values, we can talk, that'll be part of the analysis. And there'll be different alternatives through the alternative analysis that Walker Macy will do, will look at, you know, how to balance those four values, and the public will be able to look at, at, at some of those different analyses that maybe keep some historic buildings or how, you know, maybe an analysis that has a look at, you know, how adaptive reuse can work on the site. But inevitably, this master planning process is, every single building will be, you know, determined because we don't have the performa, but it'll look at tools that can help utilize four core values, understanding that balance of certainty and flexibility. And that's, you're kind of keying in on next spring's hard questions.
Okay, okay.
So I guess my answer is this fall, we, we're just starting the process to understand in the spring how the master planning can address those issues in that kind of certainty and flexible way.
Okay. So the, the public will have their chance to weigh in on these things.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So my, my assumption is that these, these future agenda items are going to be dealt with as we're proceeding. So I don't know if you want to actually have something especially beyond what we're doing here.
No, these, these are things I wanted to...
Make sure we're discussing in the overall process.
Right.
Right. And it transitions well into our next topic.
So, I'm sorry, just real quick. So Commissioner Roth, was that sufficient enough answer for now to start, I mean, we're going to start highlighting the work that we've done and then realizing that as part of the four values, you know, this is a discussion that's going to be ongoing as we move through the process.
Right, and if we can still do some investigation into virtual stuff.
You're right.
I was just talking to him, we will do that. We're also going to talk to Willamette Falls Media Center, see if they can help.
Yeah, great.
It might be a little less amateur if they work on it with us than if we do it ourselves.
I can do it myself.
That's right, I know you can.
Okay, thank you.
With that, we're going into our formal discussion item, portion of the agenda, Willamette Falls Legacy Project and this conversation and staffers, and Mr. Cockle for the introduction.
Yes, thank you. So, tonight we have Ken Peary from Walker Macy and Ellen Wyoming from Cogan Owens Cogan. And so tonight is kind of our opportunity to sit down and talk with the commission. And this has actually been a pretty fun exercise that we've done with, with Metro and these, these community conversations that we're holding. And we realize that you guys have quite a bit of background information on the site. So we do have a presentation that we give, but we're going to, we're going to go through it a little bit quicker. But if you do have questions, please feel free to ask, so that we can get to the point where we get to hear your vision, your ideas, your thoughts, your aspirations, and then we'll go from there. And so, I'll turn it over to Ken right now.
Thanks, Tony. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
So, thanks Commissioners and Mayor Neely for having us here tonight. I'm Ken Peary, I'm the project manager for the Willamette Falls Legacy Project at Walker Macy, Landscape Architects and Planners. And on behalf of our large team, I just want to thank you again for giving us this opportunity to work on this project, because we are having, we're having a great time with this project. We're really enjoying it. I think it's been about two months that we've been working on the project. We just, the range of activities from public engagement to just digging into understanding the site and touring the site and talking to technical experts across the region, it's just a really enjoyable process. And I also wanted to just mention Christina and Tony have been really great, and Kelly Musburger I should also mention, just as project partners that are always there, always available and, and very helpful, helping to move the process on. So, as Tony mentioned, we wanted to have a community conversation with you. This is a version of a presentation that has been given to a number of groups across the region already and will continue to be presented. And I'm joined by Ellen Wyoming from Cogan Owens Cogan, who is going to focus on giving you an update on all the great public engagement activities. I know many of you saw the festival and the success that that was, so she'll summarize some of the input that we got from that meeting, from that festival. So, again, this is an incredible place and an incredible opportunity for us. So, we have been quickly getting up to speed on what we understand. There's a lot of existing background research available, so we've quickly gotten up to speed on that and feel like we're getting a really good understanding of a range of issues from natural habitat issues along the river, from the, the nature of the buildings on site and their adaptability, to some of the more mundane aspects like the utilities and the stormwater plan for the site now that the salvage is almost complete. So, as part of conveying that understanding to the public, we put together a set of four brochures that we've provided to you. I'll just quickly go through what each is addressing. So there's one for healthy habitat, and these correspond to the four core values that govern this project. So the healthy habitat brochure is meant as a summary of all of the opportunities mainly along the river and recognizing the, the great opportunities of the falls themselves. So there's some background information there to peruse. And I should also mention that we're going to complement that understanding by having a series of interviews with a river-oriented set of technical advisors from a variety of agencies who will help sort of build that understanding. There's a brochure on public access, which covers circulation, things like how pedestrians might get to the site, how cyclists might get to the site, but also key issues such as the fact that there's that one intersection at Main and 99 that we need to address as part of this process. So that's public access. Economic redevelopment is a key value. So this looks at the successes that we're seeing in downtown Oregon City and some of the potential for leveraging funding and working with other partners to come up with a viable redevelopment of the site and, as is important for many people, to create jobs related to this project. And then finally, historic and cultural interpretation. And this is a really important and fascinating part of the project. We've really enjoyed digging through the, the archives of photos that have been provided, photos such as these showing the iconic Mill Building, which still remains as foundations, and the, the building in the background that is now the site of the Holly Building. So we've, you know, we toured the site many times and we've been finding these remnants of history throughout the place, but also just understanding how that might inform the next step of, the next step of change on the site, the next sort of evolution of what this site is. And yesterday, there was a, by accounts, a really productive meeting with the Grand Rhond Nation, and so getting an understanding also of the cultural importance of the site and what those goals might be. So as I mentioned, we have already established a great working relationship with Tony and Christina and Kelly, but we have these additional partners who are part of what we call a project management team that meets weekly. That includes representatives from Metro, from Clackamas County, and there's also state of Oregon representation. And these partners are also just sort of involved on a, a level that's beyond the consulting team, working closely with Tony and Christina. And I just wanted to touch on the schedule for the process. We are fully into the public engagement side of things. We are, again, building our analysis and understanding of the site. So, as we move into late August and September, we're going to be starting to build some initial scenarios for what could happen on the site, and that will be based on what we hear from you tonight, what we've heard from the public, what we've heard from other community conversations, and what that analysis shows us. And we'll hope to return to you in about a month to describe our, a summary of our analysis and how that might inform those scenarios. And then progressively, we'll just refine that thinking so that we have a final preferred plan by December that will then form the structure for the land use application, which is prepared for submittal in early winter, in January, February. So I'll pass it over to Ellen, so she can explain some of the great public involvement successes we've had so far and what's to come.
And I believe you already know this as well, that there will be a couple documents that come out of the final process with this, just before I jump into public involvement and to kind of roll through with the presentation in the order that it's being presented. We're looking at a vision strategy to have big picture goals as well as a framework master plan. And so, the key with that framework master plan is to balance that certainty and flexibility so that we're not over-regulating the site. And I know we had a, just a tiny bit of a preliminary conversation about that before the work session formally started, but we're looking at creating those guidelines and having the opportunity, especially for the public, to have that input and to state their goals. And actually have some fun statistics to share with you based on the community event that we held a few weeks ago, that I think really helped to support some of the core values, and will show that we can have within the vision and the progress or plan, those pieces that can fit together for good guidance for the structure. Next slide. The four goals, Ken actually already went over them pretty well, and they're much more in-depth and in-content in the brochures that you now have, so the sort of existing conditions about it, as well as what they do. But the key point to point out here is that public access, economic development, healthy habitat, and cultural and historic interpretation are all very important as standalone items, but more importantly, the, the sum of their parts is greater than they are as individuals. And we look at that overlap, especially in the center there, and we know that each of them will help reinforce the others. Strong public access and honoring history and preservation and cultural interpretation will emphasize redevelopment opportunities and economic development, because you create a unique place. You have an incredible asset here, and we're looking at making sure all those values are met so that there is the ability to maximize the value of the site. Is the city commission aware and up to speed on the $5 million from the state of Oregon as well as the Eclipse development bid? Because I don't need to go deeply into that. Okay, thank you. So those things are happening, we'll find out more. And so as Ken was saying, what we're doing now, this is our epic public involvement phase here, and we've, you can see some of the materials behind us. We've printed out a number of really graphic info boards to attract attention when we're at tables and we're at events. I hope that you've been able to see in the shadow boxes along Main Street that there are a couple of giant 40 by 47 inch posters that Main Street Oregon has allowed us to keep up for the part of the summer to get people to wonder, what do they see at the Blue Heron site? Here's the website, go fill out the vision survey. And also understanding that Willamette Falls Legacy Project is the redevelopment for Blue Heron, because that branding and that notification needs to happen. And so that's clear on those boards, people can start to understand that this is what we're doing and this is how they can get involved. I wonder if I can move this, I feel like I'm really leaning forward. There we go. So, some of the great things. Metro sponsored a opt-in survey panel for us as part of a regional outreach effort. In the first three days that it went live, and it went live on Saturday, July 27th, we had over 800 people in the region fill in the survey. And as of last count, when I heard about a week ago, we had over 1,100. And that is running through the 15th, so two days from now, and then that will shut down, but we already have a wide, wide breadth of comment from the region, which is fantastic. We also have the online survey, which is on the website, and I have business cards. Has the city commission received these cards yet for the project? Okay, good. I have some extra ones if anyone would like to take them with them. And on that, I think Christina, did you tell me we had about 500 people?
No, no, we have more like 200.
200, that have filled in this survey? Okay, sorry, overestimating there. But Metro's helped us out quite a bit. And then we also have paper surveys that people are filling out as we do community conversations, and they're all the same questions, and those will be consolidated and analyzed to help support the analysis, alternatives development that comes in the fall. Did everybody get a chance to go to the July 27th event at this, at the First City Festival? Okay, to see the Willamette Falls booth? So, you may remember that at the information, or the activity booth, there were two map boards, and people were able to place their comments and then take four green stickers and vote on which options and ideas that they saw that they liked, including their own. We tallied all of the responses, there were over, including the votes, 960 pieces of input on those two boards. Of those, I don't actually know how many unique responses we had. We did a little bit of aggregation, because some people kept saying the same kind of thing in different ways. We put them together, but just for some fun pieces of input for what came off of that, first place was what people wanted, for what people wanted was public viewing of the falls with 114 responses. Second place was they want a park with 85 votes. They wanted a concert venue, also in the 80s, and they want an emphasis on historic use and value with, in the high 70s. So those are the top four responses that we had on those boards. And then kind of going down the list, we had restaurants, mixed-use residential, bars and breweries, art and retail spaces. So those were the top, top categories and top lists of what people are looking for to develop in this site. And then there were a number of other responses that were kind of one-offs, like, I want an Arby's. And then there were a number of people that also stated they did not want big box development. So that's also, and that was also fairly prominent. But more people were in the affirmative on the board and were speaking about the things they did want to see, so we don't have many of the, I don't want this, aside from big box, which was also prevalent in a few of the other stations that we had opportunity for feedback. So the community is definitely speaking loudly about some of their core values and issues, and they resonate, I think, with the core values of the project thus far. So it's really heartening to see that. I'm very excited to see the results we get out of the opt-in survey and the web surveys, of course, but kind of a preliminary view of what we've done. If you haven't been to the, to the website, I encourage you to visit it, there's a lot of information on there. And we also have a Facebook page, and I think you can follow us on Twitter as well. But if you go to the Facebook page, there are some photos of the festival, and of course, Christina and Kelly are posting diligently photos of the day, and we're starting a little series too, to do a little bit of exposure for who the partners are, so that we're continuing to build a visual and personal presence so that the region and the city and the people know who's involved and who's supporting it, and how they can more personally connect to faces rather than just words on a screen. That's about it for public involvement, okay.
Maybe the next community event?
Oh, thanks. So our next community event will be October, I can't remember, October 5th?
Willamette Falls Festival.
Willamette Falls Festival, right around then, sorry, but it won't be at the festival. We'll have a table there, but we'll also have an event, I believe, the Tuesday following. And then we have a partners group meeting with representatives from all of the elected bodies who are partnered with the group, plus a member of their staff in early September, September 9th. And we're planning on, we still have a regional event to do through Metro, one more community event after that, so there'll be a series of three interactive community events, and community conversations are continuing.
There won't be anything at the Antique Fair?
We're trying to go to as many festivals as possible as staff on weekends. We are just committed to go to the Westland Heritage Fair at Marius Young Park this next weekend, and so I, I don't know if we'll be able to staff that one, because we're, we're trying to mix them up both locally and regionally.
We've also divided the responsibilities of who can attend what, just based on staff and resource times, so that Clackamas County, Metro, obviously the city, and Ken and I are going to different events as we can throughout the project, so that we get the widest breadth as well as frequency as we can throughout the process. We really are touching through a lot of people.
One thing that Metro will be doing the fall, they're going to do a little barnstorming of farmers' markets up and down the kind of Willamette Valley to look at, to kind of interacting with what we're doing at that larger regional net. And that's one of their interactive events, we'll be working on this in September.
Great, thank you.
That concludes our formal presentation. We really look forward to hearing your ideas and your visions for this project, so we can take notes on the flip chart, if that works.
And the main question we like to start out with, just to get everyone sort of thinking about it, in case you haven't taken the survey yet, or if you have, it's fine to pull from that. If it's the year 2035, what do you make, what do you want to see on the site?
Go ahead and hit your buttons there. I'm sure that we're going to have responses from every one of the commissioners. And I have Commissioner Polly first on.
Um, yes, I would like to see a connected path, connecting our paths and through the site for public access. And also the restoration of some sort of the Main Street grid. So we have an extension of our Main Street to what it was before, just somewhat of a grid. And maybe a corporate headquarters of some sort, so we have jobs. I'll let somebody else talk.
Commissioner Roth, next.
This is an idea that's, someone has brought up to me, and it's been kind of growing in my mind. Reflecting on the fact that Kanema was a, a large amusement park back a long time ago, some type of amusement thing there with carousel maybe, Ferris wheel. And I don't know if anyone has looked at the Ferris wheel in Okinawa that's 200 feet in diameter and takes 15-minute revolutions. We could do something like that, maybe a 300-foot in diameter.
Did you leave the Ferris wheel comment on the map?
Pardon me?
Was that you that left the Ferris, someone left the Ferris wheel comments?
No, actually, we had, well, we had somebody call in who wanted one the size of the St. Louis Arch.
Oh.
Let me, let me just comment on that one, not yours, but what we don't want is anything there that is more grandiose than the falls itself.
I think that'd be hard to do.
Kathy, have you seen that one in Seattle? On their, I have a picture of it on my iPad, I'll show it to you later, but they have one where it's specifically for viewing.
Yeah, that's what...
You go up there and you're in a little enclosed box, and it's for viewing the view.
And I know the one in Okinawa not only rotates this way, it rotates this way. So, it gives you a really nice view of everything. That's mine. And to see as much preservation as possible of, of the structures that are there.
Commissioner Smith.
You guys are so short, like, in terms of like...
I know. Visioning and optimism. Well, you're a makeup artist, aren't you?
I could go on for hours about this, and I've, I'm in my second phase of visioning in terms, I did draft one drawing already, but I'm working on draft two. I, I think the path connections that's been brought up by a lot of people is very important, but not only thinking about the connections to the, you know, right now, we essentially have a path that goes from Gladstone all the way to the falls, so how do we take that to, beyond the falls to Kanema, especially linking the promenade and the waterfront to Old Kanema Park, which goes back to the amusement park that was at Old Kanema Park, that was a major focal point for history. I think the Main Street grid needs to be, you know, continued and brought back, save the buildings that we can, the historic buildings that we can. That may be few, but at least we can save what's there. I think there needs to be some, and I don't want to say museum, because we don't need really more than museums, but I, I, well, in terms of museums, I could see something happening very much like a maritime museum, in the sense that we've already had multiple vessels that wanted to be housed here in, in Oregon City. I think that's going to continue. The boat basin above the falls, which its history was the steamboat capital, and Kanema itself is a canoe place, which, I mean, this, that was a boat central place for boat making. And so, I could see the upper part of the falls becoming a really neat showcase of kind of boat history. So I think there needs to be elements that, that tie back to those key elements in history, whether it's just the buildings that we save or, or just interpretation, but definitely some component of industry. And I, I don't know if that means an actual company that's running down there or, or an example of some of the industry history that's been there, but that, that should not be left out. A way to not just view the falls, but to get out to it without, without building, you know, anything that's such an eyesore that distracts from the falls, but if there's, you know, some sort of pathway or viewing areas near the falls, I think a concert area could be pretty cool as well. In terms of what is actually there in terms of development, I, I'm more open to that. I could see it being, you know, I think... I could see it being, you know, I think we all think some sort of mixed use. I'm pretty open to that. I think the one group that I would really, my opinion, I think, would be extremely driven by what the tribes have to say. I think that, I think the Confederate tribes of the Grand Ron should be one of the main, should have a huge focus in terms of letting us know what we want to do with that site in terms of history. I think, you know, we can acknowledge some of the pioneer history at that site, but I think the focus needs to be the Native American history in the city, which we have neglected for decades. Okay, that's it for now.
Next on the list is me. The paths that Commissioner Smith was referring to, I think we need, those connections to the, to Kanema are important, and we've got, and I think I've spotted it. This, I believe, is a pedestrian pathway over 99E. That is, that's north of the Museum of the Oregon Territory. If we could either move that or create a different one that goes right to the Museum of the Oregon Territory, and then maybe we can find an appropriate linkage from there into the Kanema area. Maybe there are other areas that we could link into as well. I agree with Commissioner Smith completely on having some type of industrial presence. I think if it occurs there, there ought to be a viewing point where people can actually see an industrial operation. Several years ago, I went down, and I forget her name, I think she was the public relations person for Blue Heron, and said that it'd be really nice if you had an area that people can look at the, at what was going on there, those big rollers spinning around, that huge revolutions per second, I think, was extremely impressive, and I think most people haven't had the opportunity to see that kind of operation. Well, I don't expect we're going to see that operation at this site, but the point is, maybe as we go on into the future, it appears that the paper mill activities on the other side of the river are still economically operational, and maybe something can be done on the other side of the river that allows people to see what a large industrial operation actually, how it functions, and we, I think most people don't see that anymore. The other thing that's, I know it's come up on your reader boards, that you've mentioned a concert area, I'd like to see an indoor/outdoor operation there. The former chair of the Foundation Board of Clackamas Community College is also on the Board of Clackamas Repertory Theater. Their, their showings are occupying themselves seats there now, and if we could have something that can be a year-round operation, maybe opened up in some way during the summertime, but available during the winter, the wetter periods as well. The other thing that Commissioner Polly and I went down to the discussion with the Confederate tribes of the Grand Ron just yesterday, and when we're talking about the healthy habitat, the description and the, that was given there was pointing out the, the unique habitat that you had there because of the mist of the falls. And that's, you know, that's been altered in the summer a great deal by the fact that a lot of the water is going through the power plant. It occurs to me there might be some area where we may be able to create season-wide mist to support that. One thing I noticed when I was making the trip, I'm going to go off the mic for a minute, and make, and point to the area that I'm talking to, then I'll talk about it. This area here. If you look, if you look down there, there are ponds there, and of course, the water is going through there, through the winter. If there was a method of directing the mist water into this area season-wide, I think would have, you know, I think it would attract a lot of the kind of vegetation that used to be there when the falls were flowing continuously throughout the year. Well, the falls still do, but not, not like they did in the summertime prior to the industrial use of the area. So those are some thoughts that I, you know, have come to me in the process of looking at the site and hearing other people. And now we're back to Commissioner Polly again.
Yes, of course, I forgot a few things. So I would like to add to the mixed-use idea, and that's to create continuity between the existing downtown, but I think the addition of housing in the form of condos or something in a mixed-use building would be a good way to introduce housing and livability and a full-time presence down there at the site. And also making sure that the old and the new have a nice marrying together. Is it machine, is it paper machine number four? Is that the one very lofty? I envision something in that, maybe not like Pike Place Market, but maybe a, you know, a multi-use area with a rock-climbing wall, or, or something to pair the outdoor and indoor experience. You could have something very impressive in that building and restore some of the architectural details in that building, the windows and things that you just don't see in buildings today. So again, that historic preservation, I think, is, you know, very important on the buildings that you can, and making sure the buildings that are added work together with that. And the tribe's history, really to tell their story of their experience at the falls. So you get the whole experience along with the experience of having the mist on your face and, and being there, the outdoor experience. And I think it's important not to look at this project in a vacuum, but what else is going on in the region? And Oregon City and Clackamas County is kind of getting that outdoor niche that we have going with different connecting trails, the trolley trail, the stuff that's going to go on hopefully at Newell Creek Canyon with the mountain biking trails, the rivers that we have, the kayaking, the open water swimming in Clackamas Cove, I could go on and on. But I think really, really showing, showcasing the resources that we do have, and helping to make it a destination place along with our history, a way of really working that tourism, maybe in a different angle than we have before.
Very well. Mr. Frazier.
Thank you. I wanted to mention, along with those, because of the segue I have, is that it's, we all know that parking and preferably some sort of vertical parking structure is going to go hand-in-hand with...
Got that one.
The density, I know it's like the one that Wendy said, so that's the one I picked. And then also, if there's going to be any kind of housing component naturally, you mentioned market, but there would be, I think, need for some sort of, some sort of market where people wouldn't be forced to maybe get off-site. We want that to be a pedestrian kind of neighborhood, so that means there's going to have to be some sort of food shopping there that's available somewhere. On one of the tours that we took with a number of architects there one day, and of course, when you have a group of architects around you and you're on a tour of the site, you get a lot of free information. And one of the observations, one of them made to me was, and I hearken back to when Nancy Crusher worked here, and she used to talk about the concrete in the river, but this architect said, he said, you know, do you think maybe, his idea was that there should be some sort of artificial stone applied to some of the linear surfaces, if it could be put on those surfaces in the actual viewing area of the falls, to make some of the man-made concrete structures look less linear, but still function well? You know, because they do serve a purpose that is important to the users on the site. And, you know, I have fake stone on the front of my house, so I know the stuff is pretty tough. I don't know how it holds up under waterfall, but I'm sure there's got to be a way to maybe take a look at that, and if it wouldn't impede the, the operation of it in some way, or if it was a negligible interference, maybe we could look at that as one of the options, because I think it would definitely improve the visual appeal, especially as the water recedes a little bit in the summer months. That's all I had.
Good. Back to Commissioner Smith.
One of the things that I think we need to think about with the economic development piece is tourism, which I know we will be thinking of, but this could be the only opportunity we have to put a focal point and come up with a solution on how to keep the locks going, whether it's through river taxis or, or getting people, you know, I could see river taxis, I could see, when we even talked about the tram, about, you know, when the tram was an idea, I questioned the tram, saying, why do we need a tram? The history has been boats. We can use the locks and have boats to get people to all these places that you would see, and it's, it fits the history. It actually fits. So I think we haven't found a fix to show that the locks are drastically, constantly being used, and I think this is probably the one chance we're going to have to do that. And so I think the locks have, we really need to think about, the one great idea that came up with the kayaking piece that we've heard is that there was a, kind of, an idea of doing a kayaking shoot, for the lack of a better word, off to the side of the falls that kind of bypassed the falls, where, you know, kayakers could go down and kind of create a training area possibly. Well, then you see them floating down, getting back up the locks, and going around again. So some, you know, how can we use the locks in a way that makes that viable and keeps that history going as well?
Commissioner Roth, again.
Wow, I'm just thinking of shooting down the falls. That's scary.
I would do it.
No, around the falls. I said around the falls. I'm not going to go on the falls.
Okay. Well, things that I forgot were a hotel or some type of place to stay, and when Carol was talking about the outdoor activities, hostel came to mind, you know, because that's a lot of people that do that kind of traveling or sports things.
Where do you say that, where do you edit your hostel?
Hostel.
Hostel, not hostile.
Yeah. And then, of course, my, yeah. My old one of the, the train being relocated there, the train depot, and David's thing about parking, that's, I talked to someone this weekend who was familiar with the award that the administration building down there won, when it was built, and I guess the description of it at that time was brutally modern. And I thought, brutally modern is a really good description.
A wish building?
The administration.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, that would be a good parking place to me.
Okay, it comes back to me now. I guess one of the, I don't know if it's a true constraint, or it's one that they mentioned, is that the core serves commercial traffic.
Right.
And if it's not too lofty, is to have the, have the, have the core's goals changed a bit, but that's probably pretty lofty. But the point is, recreational use is great, but the point is, there still is commercial use to that facility. The aggregate industry is one of the major, was one of the major users of that facility in terms of moving gravel and so forth.
And tourism is a commercial use.
And that is a commercial use. And I think if, I think if those locks are open, and of course, it's an issue for the Canby Ferry, too. I mean, if we go into any permanent closure of the, of the falls, then the problems of getting that ferry maintained becomes really, becomes really problematic. So I think we look at both mixed commercial and recreational use of that facility. The, I think we've got, my understanding is that that sawmill on the other side, is that the one that's right on the, right on the cliff there, on the Westland side, historic sawmill? Or do you know, Rocky?
I'm not sure.
My under...
Oh, it's closer to the Sullivan plant, the old sawmill.
There's, with, with equipment in it? Okay. I understand that that, then that's not on our side, though. I, I would like to see a big reach-out in this process, because my understanding, the roof of that facility is, is, it's being, it's being impaired, and of course, leakage would be detrimental. So the point is, even though we've lost those mills, we've got a historic, a historic site that could be maybe open to the public, just so people would see what the sawmill looked like, and then, as I mentioned earlier, the existing paper mill. I had one person call me up and said, well, what are you going to do about those paper, those mills on the other side? Well, I pointed out, it's part of the history, and I think, I think in our grand visioning is that we'd like to see that piece preserved, because it's still there. I mean, we've gone, we've gone through the agony of the loss of the mills, but we still have it present at that, in that location, and make that, make that part of the story that's told on this site as well, about what we have over there, which includes the locks. So make, make Westland a major, maybe not a financial partner in this effort, but a major partner in, in, in the overall picture of what happens here, and I'm, I'm sure you're thinking about that. And I don't see the third, I don't see the third round. I, I don't see any problem with taking five or 10 minutes, if any member of the public wishes to come up and say a word, and I'll start off with a member of public, Mr. Lewis.
That's true. I'm a citizen, but I was going to say, I'll be remiss if I didn't get to say, I'd really like to see some beautiful public infrastructure.
Yeah.
And new wire lines, new sewer lines, from our public works.
Restoring the grid.
So that's my input. How's that?
Does the library director have any desires down there?
Uh, library branch?
Okay. And I assume our economic development manager has all kinds of hopes and ideas there.
Job, job, job.
Jobs, jobs, jobs. Okay. And John, any member of the public wants to throw in their two bits, this is fine. Come on, come on forward, and be sure you get your name there after you, after you speak. Your name, where you live, and all that good stuff. Actually, that's the only good stuff, then you can follow whatever you say afterwards.
Brian Shaw, Oregon City. You know, bringing up those locks, that's a great idea, is how we're going to justify getting those things open again, Rocky, that's cool. And I've always thought of this new project as being very pedestrian, and so the limited automobile use would be great, and I agree with Mr. Frazier that a parking structure right at the entry to this thing to stop any kind of vehicular traffic, or minimize it, is a, is a great idea. So I envision just kind of a meandering little thoroughfare pedestrian mist promenade going down to the end of this thing here with the, with the park there, and real public access there. The concert venue thing, I'm not sure how that works there, whether, how the noise is, you know? That falls is kind of loud, you know, so anybody that's going to put on a concert, it's going to turn it pretty good, and I think some people on the hiller might have something to say about that as the noise carries.
Ground out of seals.
It does carry, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, but a lot of good ideas here tonight and stuff, so and I agree that, man, if that sawmill was still there and stuff, we can show that as a kind of a, as a historical piece and stuff. You know, the thing we got to be careful of here is, and I don't want to dampen this, but we're talking about a lot of public process here and projects that, keep in mind, we want this on the tax rolls as much as possible, so if we try to incorporate all these things here, that's going to be a lot of public space versus taxpaying ability to pay for that public space, so, but a lot of good stuff here tonight, I think.
I'll just ask for a moment, anybody else in the public? Commissioner Polly.
Um, yes, this project is so massive that there are so many ideas out there, but one idea that I had related to parking is to put the parking garage on the, it'd be the north side of 99, and have a connecting sky bridge over to the site. So that takes 99 completely out of the picture, having to, having to deal with that, and handling the pedestrians and people in there, and we already have a vertical street elevator. We could have something kind of like that from the skywalk going down to the street level, and that would be a safe way to get people from Main Street, it also would connect the two, to the site, without having to worry about 99.
Yes, here.
I just want to say a couple things.
Sure.
He's laughing.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I think we have a real opportunity to...
I just wanted to say that I think we have a real opportunity to capture some job density here. And Clackamas County is fairly deficient in its job density. We have a chance to capitalize on the niche that we're developing in our downtown, the creative class, that's moving into the downtown area. Those folks aren't looking for large warehouses, big expansive lots. They're looking, they go up. I mean, these are offices. These are high-paying traded sector jobs. I think we need to keep the traded sector job thing in mind. And there's a real opportunity here for that. This is just the type of location that some of these folks would want to be located. We're talking corporate headquarters, even. So, thanks.
I threw myself back in again. Did I knock you out?
Well, I'm still there.
You turned gray on me.
It's the dog.
You're back on, and switch me, switch me with Kathy Roth, please.
Okay. Something I didn't know, if, Christina, if you were aware of, the Oregon Steam Museum is moving to Brooks. And-
No, it's Nomzy, or?
No, the one that's out on the, on the way to the beach.
Oh, okay.
And I guess they've really, really expanded tremendously, and they've gone to a nonprofit. And they have, they're really focusing on industrialization. So there's all kinds of separate museums that focus on all different kinds of industrialization, and lumber production, and all that kind of stuff. If there was some way we could tie in, some kind of a tie with that, I don't know, I can't envision what it is, but I just thought maybe we should consider it. That's it.
Semi on the industrial side, but I think the opportunity for tourists coming in, and to have artisans down there, producing, you know, not importing a bunch of trinkets from overseas, or something like that, but actually, things that are produced at that site, that people can see are being produced at that site, would be great. The other thing, and I know it's come up before, but, you know, the McMiniman's model, in terms of maybe some of these, some of the current structures being used, they've done a great job. A lot of these are more massive than some of the things they've done, but maybe, maybe part of a structure, or something of that nature, would be possible.
Is there time for one brief question, another, another question to ask?
Sure.
The other question we are really, also really interested in, is time of day uses, as well as multi-generational uses of the site, and how people interact with, with activities and locations. And so if you have any thoughts on time of year, time of day, people, across all ability levels, that would be great to hear.
I'm going to just step in a little bit on that one. The comment has been made correctly, that the summer flow doesn't produce the colossal waterfall as you see in the winter. I think to have some kind of an enclosed viewing area, where people can actually see the tremendous flow that occurs in, in the spring, I think that would be great. One of the, one of the reasons that you have the salmon, it's above the falls there, those falls are very vertical, Salilo Falls, which unfortunately, it was drowned by the Dalles Dam. It had, it had areas where the fish could actually move up. That's not the case, it's very vertical there, Willamette Falls. But you had heavy flows in the spring here, and that was accompanied by the water from the Columbia backing up and coming higher on the falls, so the salmon could actually make the jump over. And, and so those, those spring flows are, are dramatic. And however you do that, in terms of seasonal attraction, I think it would be great. Coming back to Brian Shaw's point about the noise of the falls, it's one of the reasons I was talking about an indoor facility, too. That maybe there could be something in, be it in the hallways or something, where they could actually see the natural beauty as well. So, I think those kind of events can occur, but I agree with you. Those, those other environmental factors like noise have to be taken into account. And you think it's seasonally?
Well, see, I'm thinking more generationally. I'm thinking, if we include something like carousels and things, you're going to have a draw for the younger crowd to be there, as well as the arts crowd that wants to look at, you know, original art pieces, or whatever. I'm trying to get older in my mind, and I can't think any older, so. Doug, you want to do that?
I'm actually, I'm actually trying to think about that. I mean, I think it comes down to access for, you know, for people that may not be as, can't walk that well and so forth. But I think that's going to be a natural thing that we're going to, we're going to build into the, to the process. But, you know, at one point or another, maybe we do have guides that, you know, can move the wheelchair, as well as perhaps take people around, and show, show things there. But I think build into that. I mean, one of the, I guess one of the issues with the pedestrian overpass there, and that's okay, I think we can use it, but Carol Polly's notion that maybe, maybe another elevator, or something, somehow that the people can actually get, get up there to the, to the promenade, that perhaps have to use a wheelchair, cane, or walker, and get to the museum, and get to the falls, to be sure to take that into account. Thanks, thanks for my, request my expertise on the topic.
Okay, yes, that's what I was, you know, we want to think about moving sidewalks at some point like that.
Can I mention something about, that I can't stop thinking about? One, if parking has got to be reverberated, because all this, we have a lot of problems right now with parking downtown, just with the draw there. And I just see it being much worse with limited space. Who wants to make more parking lots? But they're going to be needed. But the other thing that just is kind of scary, is 99 coming out of the tunnel-
Right.
-headed northbound. And if downtown is extended, and people are wanting to go between the two, and you've got a state highway, right between how people get from old downtown to whatever is going to be the new downtown, that's scary, just for pedestrians. However that works, whether that's something that goes over 99, or if we could wave a wand and have 99 go underground, that would be perfect.
Well, exactly. And I see the danger of that. And that's why I suggested a parking structure on the other side of 99, with a connection over it, or, yeah, under it, might be more expensive, but it's good to just-
Might be.
Would be.
Commissioner Smith?
In terms of the hours of the day, I would like to see it fairly consistent with Main Street as it is, where, as it is now, where there is things happening on it the day, and then that kind of shifts into the restaurant, evening crowd. I think, right now, we have, you know, well, what, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, on Main Street, which may have to adjust to, to some degree, where we're talking about the housing component, which we don't have right now. So that'll be another consideration that we need to think about, if we start having residential spaces downtown. But I don't, I, I would like to see it, I would like to see this site function really in the same way that, the current Main Street does. Where the use, in terms of the hours of the day, and things like that.
Of course, that might change the hours of the day at Main Street. I mean, it may really become a 24-hour city.
Right.
Yeah. Commissioner Roth?
One thing I want to make sure that we do, is take a look at what our current existing downtown, and we don't do anything that's going to detract from what's already been done there.
That's right.
Yep.
That's right. We have a lot, I think, I think we've all been there, and we see structure built upon structure, and a lot of area under what appears to be the ground levels available. And not, not my priority idea, but maybe in the non-flood season, that, that parking might be possible under there. But also, what might be possible under there are underground concerts, or something like that, where you've got a kind of a sound barrier that might be above the lower place, but where maybe music kind of reverberates down there, might be a possibility, too. But looking at that area that's under what we see as the current mill site, I think, I think some, some ways to look at that as an encumbrance to the development, that maybe actually, that is a, that can be used in a very positive fashion.
Tunnel tours, perhaps?
Ghost tours, perhaps?
Perhaps.
Thank you.
This is great.
Great, I appreciate it.
I, you know, I want to make sure that there's no perception here, that the commission is guiding this initial process. We're, we're throwing out ideas, some of which I think we've heard from other people as well. But I, I, I think our consultants here are going to consider our comments as, as important, but are not going to consider them overarching compared to any of the other comments that are coming forward. And so, we don't want to look at it that way. And eventually, the master planning process, as it comes forward, comes through the planning commission before it comes to us. So, there'll be various other points for public comments, as, as we get the master plan drafted and so forth, before we even see it. So, there's, there's, I mean, I'm sure the discussion we have here may just trigger other discussions, and other topics that we haven't even considered at this point. I think the challenge isn't not to, is not going to be how to identify potential uses, it's how to, how to distill. That's going to be the real challenge, I believe. Okay, with that, we'll go on to our next topic.
So if I could just-
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you for, for the comments. And we will be touching back with you periodically as we go through this process, to make sure that the commission's informed and up to date on where we're at, and what we're finding as we go along. And then also, just like to remind folks that we've referenced our webpage and our Facebook page. So, our webpage is rediscoverthefalls.com. It's a very excellent way to stay informed of the events that we're having, where we're at, the plans that are being created, the information that's being created, and just a good way to stay up, up to speed. And from there, you can get to our Twitter feeds, our Facebook feeds. You know, please like it, please send it along to all your friends. We really appreciate that.
Commissioner Smith?
And we've, I think this has been talked about before, but in what ways currently is this process, I've kind of lost track where, where the National Heritage Area process is. But what are the, what are the collaborations, if any, between that process moving forward, and this process moving forward? I mean, they overlap so much, in some ways, I don't think that many people have any idea that they're two separate things, which I think is okay, to some degree. But, you know, so how are we being, how are we kind of seeing both those projects moving forward, and also in conjunction?
Sure, it's absolutely complimentary. We had a community conversation with the Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition. It was, actually, I think, one of my most productive-
Yeah.
...community conversations. They're keyed into this process, you know, through the master plan, and more importantly, the vision and strategy document that will come out of this process in the spring. Will identify the heritage area, and they maybe have more information for us in the spring, that we can provide more detailed next steps, rather than work with the Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition. So, yeah, anytime we can get more specifics as we move forward, we'll, we'll add that in. But right now, we're really on a parallel and completely collaborative process, where we both are aiding in the creation of each other, I think.
Yeah.
Great.
Go on to the next topic, which is presentation of green fleet, green fleet, excuse me, alternative fuel opportunities for the city of Oregon City. And John Lewis will be talking to us. You'll be introducing somebody else, I presume.
Right. I think you've all met Martin Montalvo, he's the new operations manager, and he's put a bunch of energy into putting together this presentation. So, he's going to take, take on the line and share this. I just kind of wanted to introduce the fact that this was a topic that I think Commissioner Roth, maybe others had brought up before. I recall the suggestion by Commissioner Roth, that we bring a work session topic to you. And I think it's timely for, for Oregon City and other cities our, our size in the metro area, to really kind of think about this topic. I don't think, after kind of looking through some of the things that we've found, that we're at all kind of behind the ball here. We're definitely still on a good track. There have been others that have made progress that, in, in the direction of using alternative fuels. And we've made a little progress of our own. We have a few pieces of our fleet that would be considered alternate fuels, but there's opportunity for more of that. But I, but again, I want to emphasize, I think, taking your time and making that decision, making a holistic decision on what the, the city and its fleet needs, and how they fit into the use of alternate fuels, is still kind of up for debate, and we'll see some of that. So, Martin, if you want to step through this, there's, we've got, our intent was to provide about 20 minutes' worth of presentation, and then open that up for discussion. Obviously, you can ask questions as you, as you please, but we, we told our other department heads that we'd, we'd take up about 20 minutes presenting. So we'll try to do that.
Martin Montalvo, I'm the operations manager for the Public Works Department. Let me start by saying that that's a tough act to follow. So, I'm going to try and make this as entertaining and painless as possible. You guys asked for a presentation on alternative fuels, kind of get a background on where we stand right now, what's the course that we're trying to get to final destination, and how we, we think we can get there. So we're going to start our conversation with just a brief history of what's going on regionally, what the state is pushing in terms of initiatives, what other communities comparable to our size, and within the state of Oregon are doing. And then we'll move into the various types of alternative fuels, because there's a lot of discussion, a lot of alternatives. We've kind of steered our conversation in one direction, based on some of the information that we've read, and what some of the trends regionally are. And then we'll go into some of the pros and cons for one of the preferred alternatives that we have. And then we'll talk about some real-world numbers. We actually ran some case studies using some of our own assets, and what potential there is in savings with utilizing a switchover for those assets into some sort of alternative fuel format. So, this is a little wordy, but I'm just going to go through this with you. These are just some of the initiatives that the state of Oregon with this legislature is pushing forward. One of them is the clean transportation fuel standards, which is in the process of enactment, which is basically asking fuel providers, that we start looking at means of decreasing our carbon emissions, just through the fueling process itself. From there, there's a state initiative for local municipalities that are underneath the state, so the counties will qualify for this, as well as various state agencies, to do a set aside for green fleeting. The state legislature would mandate a certain percentage of the fleet, that would have to be green-fleeted within a certain time period, kind of forcing that switchover within our internal fleet process. Then there's another program that's been fairly successful, especially with the, some changes recently with the Portland school districts, for school buses. One of the things that we found out through our discourse, was that vehicles that have a fixed route, that you know, this is what you're doing every day, those are usually your best alternative fuel vehicles, because you can plan for that fuel consumption, which some of the limitations that alternative fuels have, if you can take that into account in your planning process, it makes that a little bit more beneficial for that vehicle type, and the use that you're looking at. So these are just some of the legislative initiatives that are moving forward. Most of these are still in the legislative process. A few of these have actually already been enacted. There's a lot more information to this. We just gave you a highlight of three of the major ones that we thought were pertinent to some of the discussion that we're going to have today.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Back in your first paragraph there, you talk about the Oregon Clean Fuels Program. I know that there was a, a law, I believe it was a law that was enacted about aerosol recovery at the pump, right? Do we have that on our pumps, city pumps? Is that?
The city doesn't have pumps necessarily. We've got a couple of 500 gallon-
Okay. So we're not fueling our own vehicles?
We're not fueling our own vehicles.
It's being taken care of at the commercial level.
Right.
Yeah. We're currently using Stein as our, our fuel provider. We do have a couple 500 gallon diesel tanks that we use for our heavy equipment, but the aerosolization capture laws, I do not believe apply to those tank capacities.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So just as an example, we mentioned this earlier, Portland Public Schools, they recently went through a really big green fleeting initiative- recently went through a really big green fleeting initiative. They have a private contractor that provides their transportation for the school system, and they were able to obtain federal grant dollars that allowed them to acquire 89 alternative fleet vehicles. These are propane-driven school buses, they're 32-passenger buses, and they're running through out the Portland School District as of this year. I think this is the first year they're actually fully functional. The fleet hasn't been fully delivered, but it's operating. They're projecting, from switching over to propane, and when we start talking about fuel costs, you'll kind of see where they're coming at, they're projecting over half a million dollars in annual fuel savings. Some of the ancillary benefits of alternative fuels also comes down to maintenance, wear and tear, your investment in keeping your fleet running. We'll talk a little bit about that, but that's one of the things that's going on. Now, this is a solid waste provider over in Sherwood Pride Disposal. They started making initiatives within their corporate structure back in 2006. They made initiatives to start green fleeting, just based on, they saw the opportunities for compressed natural gas. They started with biodiesel, then they went into compressed natural gas, and most of their fleet that they're running out of the Sherwood area is functioning off of compressed natural gas right now. I believe all of their solid waste vehicles are on some form of alternative fuel. There, again, the thought process behind this is fixed route, you know what you're doing, you know your needs, there's not a fluctuation, you're not going to be sending one of your trucks over to Salem because you need to go there for a day trip, you know where they're going to be every day. So, another big thing within their corporate structure is they've adopted this clean air policy and trying to move into environmental stewardship corporate-wise, so they tout that within their corporate structure. So, Wilsonville is a really good comparative model that we thought we'd take a very close look at, and both John and myself have gotten opportunities to go over there and talk to their fleet department. One of the things that they have, they have their smart system, which is their local transit system, and they're currently running two compressed natural gas buses within their local commuter system. They're 18-passenger buses. Their ridership numbers, unfortunately, they don't break them out in terms of their CNG versus their traditional fuels, but when I started talking to their fleet director, that's something I think they're probably going to keep a closer tab on. So, if we come back, broach this subject sometime in the future, hopefully we'll have some ridership numbers for you there. They do have a pretty substantial program that they've initiated, and they're actually upsizing everything in the next year. They're taking advantage of the closeout of a lot of these federal energy initiative grants that are getting ready to unfortunately sunset. And they're going to be going from a two CNG fleet to six CNG 18-passenger buses, as well as a biodiesel pickup truck, which we'll talk a little bit further about in a few minutes. So, one of the leading alternate fuel areas in the state is actually in the Rogue Valley, our neighbors down in Medford. They have several initiatives that they instituted back there in the 80s, starting with biodiesel, and they're moving their way primarily into CNG right now. They've got their solid waste providers utilizing that. The city itself is one of the few municipalities that has a municipal CNG fueling station, which they use for their private vehicles, for private vehicles as well as public vehicles. And one thing that they have here, which we thought was really interesting, and we used it for our case study, is they implement a CNG-fueled street sweeper. And again, I'm trying to get back to that model of fixed route assets. So, we looked at that, and then you'll see some information that we put together for you in our case study for that. So, some things to take into consideration, give you a little bit of the history of where we stand regionally, but thinking about how we would implement this within our own structure. Few things to think about is station coverage in your area. So, if you're going to go with an alternative fuel, what are your backups? So, if we would have to do some sort of internal fleeting fueling process within the city itself, but if that wasn't available, what are the alternatives? So, propane, rarely available, multiple locations, compressed natural gas. While natural gas is available, the compression process and putting it into fuels is not as readily available regionally. Historical fuel costs helps you do your rationales and figure out your return on investment. So, if we went this direction, how long would it take to recoup the initial investment? Total cost of the vehicle ownership, that's fuel, maintenance, all of these ancillary things that your kids don't think about when they're hounding you, "Mom and Dad, buy me a car," that you're just thinking, "You buy me a car, that's the only thing I ever have to worry about." So, all of those ancillary costs. Possible tax credits, while some of the grants and funding opportunities defer the upfront costs are basically sunsetting, several of the tax credits that are available, those are set to continue on for several more years, and we can take advantage of those. As an example, city of Wilsonville, they're currently getting a federal grant that will help defer their per-gallon cost for CNG by 50 cents per gallon. And that's a grant program that'll be running for several years. Then the other thing is approach your fuel conservation program comprehensively. Switching to an alternative fuel, thinking we're going to save a lot of money this way is a myopic view. You really need to take a look at more of a holistic program of how we're going to approach fuel conservation and minimizing our fleet overhead costs associated with fuel and its other components. So, this is a little breakout of what are the alternative fuels that are rarely available, and what's their current market share? So, currently, as the primary examples that we've looked at, compressed natural gas occupies about 10% of the energy market right now. Biodiesel is about 6% of the energy market right now. The big hitters that are out there obviously are electricity, the grids here, it's rarely available, everybody has access to it. Propane, propane's everywhere, okay? There's issues associated with propane as a vehicle fuel, but you can pull up to almost every other gas station, and they're going to have propane tanks there. Several of them have large cylinder tanks that can fuel up a vehicle for you. And then there's ethanol. Ethanol, again, is blended into your commercial fuel that you're currently putting in your own private vehicles now. So, fuel prices is a main thing to consider when you're weighing your alternatives in terms of fuel. This is a historic overview of the major fuel commodities across the last 13 years. So, we got this information from the Department of Energy. And if you take a look at the very bottom graph, the one that's sitting currently at $2.10 per gallon, this is our alternative that we're going to explore a little bit further, compressed natural gas. Comparatively, it's running about half of your cost for your current diesel or gasoline equivalents. Those are the two major fuel commodities that are out there, so we kind of restricted our conversation to this.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
You have those three listed, and I presume a gallon of each of these differ in terms of how much energy is available?
We're getting right there.
Okay.
Yep, good question. So, fuel comparisons property, I know this is a lot of information here, but we wanted to point out a few things to you. First thing is, we want to have an apples-to-apples conversation, not apples to oranges to watermelons. So, there are different commodities, different physical and chemical states, so we have to start kind of equating everything to have this conversation. So, you have a gallon of gasoline. The term that's used readily in the energy industry is what's called GGE, it's gasoline-gallon equivalent. So, how much of commodity X do I have to have to equal one gallon of gasoline? So, for the conversation we're going to have regarding compressed natural gas, you have to have about 126 cubic feet of natural gas to equal one gallon of gasoline, okay? That's just going to give you the equivalent energy load, so it's, you have to take 126 cubic feet of gas, of natural gas, and compress it into a compressed cylinder at about 3,000 PSI to get that same gallon equivalent for gasoline. They, I didn't put it in here because it starts getting a little too convoluted and too much in the weeds, but we talk about it in terms of BTUs. How many BTUs do you get from a gallon of gas versus BTUs from the equivalent quantity of compressed natural gas? So, gasoline's extremely energy-rich, compressed natural gas, not so much. And we'll get into a little bit more detail as to how that leads into decreased gas mileage that you get from compressed natural gas versus gasoline. But what I wanted to note here is the GGE conversation, how much natural gas equals one gallon of gasoline. And then the other thing that I want to focus on is CNG, compared to all of the other fuel alternatives, is the most domestically sourced energy resource we have in the United States, okay? So, if we're looking in terms of bolstering the United States economy, if we're looking in terms of sourcing our resources from a local source, CNG provides the greatest opportunity compared to the other methods of energy. All right, so GGEs, again, 121.5 here, the other information I got from the Department of Energy, 126, it's, you know, six in one hand, half dozen in the other. That basically is your equivalent for gasoline versus natural gas. Pricewise, gallon of gasoline right now, filled up yesterday, $3.84, stings a little. CNG equivalent quantity of gas to equal that gallon of gasoline, you're looking at about $1.50 to $2.10. So, you're roughly running somewhere about 50% of your cost for equivalent gasoline. $1.50 is if you're fueling from your home station, or you have your own fleeting facility, $2.10 if you're buying at a commercial station, okay? Other factors to consider when you're thinking about this gasoline/CNG comparison. Gasoline, much higher BTUs than compressed natural gas. Even at a GGE equivalent, still much higher burn capacity. So, that relates to how many miles per gallon are you going to get out of that? The other thing is that because you're compressing compressed natural gas, or you're putting natural gas in a compressed state, you've got this big bulky tank that you're placing in the back of a vehicle. Because gasoline is so dense in energy, you can basically put 10, 15 gallons of gasoline in your tank, whatever the fixed volume is. That same volume of space will only hold about half the equivalent of compressed natural gas. The cylinders that are required to hold that compressed natural gas in a safe manner, so if you're in a slight fender bender, you're not leaking natural gas all over the place, are quite bulky and large. So, those are two issues that affect your fuel range, which is one of the main issues with compressed natural gas. All right, so commercially, what's out there? What's available if we decide to make this venture? So, we looked at a couple alternatives based on the case studies that we're going to give you guys. One of them being Honda Civic. Honda has one of the most commercially available CNG vehicles on the market right now. It's actually the highest-selling CNG vehicle in history. A CNG Honda Civic four-door, and I think it's the EX style model, is $27,000 roughly, okay? Comparable Honda Civic gas model is $21,000. So, you're looking at a significant markup. It's 21% cost differential between a CNG model and the gas model. Conversely, for one of our other case studies, we looked at diesel trucks. So, we currently have a very large fleet of trucks that we utilize within Public Works, primarily in our Parks and Recreation Department. So, if we were looking at comparative cost for a CNG-fueled vehicle, truck vehicle, versus a gasoline, you're looking at almost a 32% markup for having that CNG vehicle versus a gasoline comparison. Now, what's very popular right now, especially for something that's considered a heavy-duty vehicle, is a bi-fuel mixture, okay? And Chrysler's coming out with a Dodge Ram heavy-duty truck, actually came out first year is this year, that runs on compressed natural gas and gasoline. It basically will accept both types of fuels, it has dual fuel injectors that will allow it to take whichever mix you want to. You can control it manually, or you can let the computer control it. So, you get the fuel efficiency that you get, or the cost savings you get from CNG, you get to run on that until you feel you're running low on CNG, and then the computer will naturally switch you over to gasoline, so that you're able to make that extended-range trip. Conversely, you're pulling a heavy load, you're not going to have the same torque capacity with CNG that you would with a gasoline-fueled vehicle, so you can switch it over manually so you can pull heavy-duty loads, okay? All right, so fuel costs. One of the pros that we wanted to bring up to you, obviously, CNG is about half the price. Some of the studies that we found nationally, prices range between 30% to 40% nationally for the cost comparison for gas to CNG equivalents. City of Wilsonville, right now, what are they getting? It's a good comparison to ourselves, relatively same size population-wise. They are paying $1.54 annually, based on seasonal fluctuations, for their GGE equivalent compressed natural gas. This is not including the 50 cents per GGE grant that they're about to get next year. So, once that comes into play, they'll be paying $1.4 roughly for their GGE equivalents. So, these are some historic numbers from Wilsonville themselves. We wanted to find out, you know, what have you guys been paying across the course of this compressed natural gas program? How much savings have you kind of really looked at? So, we got these numbers from them, and we thought would be useful for you to take a look at. Again, it's that same conversation of the three primary models that we were exploring for you. So, what are the, some more pros for CNG? Obviously, the environmental factors, burns much cleaner, significant reductions in our air emissions, reduces the reliance on foreign oil. Again, it's the most domestically sourced energy source we have. And then some other tax incentives that are still out there on the federal and the state level that we could try and take advantage of if we wanted to move in this initiative. What are the cons of CNG? It's not the miracle cure, the silver bullet that everybody's looking for for everything, so there's obviously some cons. First thing, and we talked about it briefly, is that the cost of the CNG vehicles is significantly greater. On the average, you're looking at about a 25% increase on a CNG model versus a gasoline model. Give you a couple examples that you see here. Other things is the infrastructure that's required to fuel those vehicles. If you wanted to purchase a CNG vehicle for just your home use, you'd be looking at the upcharge on the vehicle itself, but then you'd be looking at about $5,000 in infrastructure at just your home to hook up a home charging station onto your natural gas fee that you have at your house, okay? We could do something similar to this within some of our municipal facilities, but we'd have the same cost scenarios looking at that. So, as I stated, they're about 25% more expensive than your standard gasoline models, but they're also about 10% more expensive than some of your hybrid models. Within our existing fleet of vehicles, we have three hybrids running within our city fleet. They were at a premium compared to their gas counterparts, but we're actually getting a very good return on our investment with those. That will hopefully make up that difference in the short term. It'd take a little bit longer with going to that 25% increase in cost for CNG. So, side-by-side comparison of some of the vehicles that are commercially out there right now. Again, we used some of the same models that I gave you earlier, the Honda Civic EX versus the Honda Civic CNG, you're looking at a $6,000 upcharge. The main thing that I kind of want to focus on is the fuel savings that you get onto an annual basis, because that fuel saving is going to dictate when you hit your return on investment, your breakeven. So, if it costs you $5,000 extra, and you're only recouping about $500 a year in fuel savings, then your decision may not be driven economically, it may be driven more on some other factors that you take into place, okay? Some other cons with CNG, fueling's very limited, both regionally and throughout the United States. These aren't long-haul vehicles, okay? Freightliner just completed a project where they had two CNG vehicles traverse from California all the way to Washington DC. And the mileage was increased by over $1,200 for each, or 1,200 miles for each of those vehicles, because they had to traverse to various locations where they could find CNG fueling points. It's available at the Freightliner website, it's actually a very interesting little study that they did. Primarily, your CNG fueling locations are all operated by public or private fleets, so you have to take that into consideration. If we were to take this initiative, it would have to be something that we'd have to consider with possible new operations center, is how do you address that, that infrastructure need? The fittings for the fuelings are a little different, people have to get accustomed to that, have to get a certain level of comfort with it, it's different, people are scared of natural gas to some extent, so you'd have to get them over that. And then the actual feeds, it's a very low pressure, so it takes a considerable amount of time to fuel up a CNG vehicle overnight, okay? We can go to some alternatives here in just a second. So, range, major issue with CNG vehicles. So, the fueling issue, slow versus fast fill. The most inexpensive means is what's referred to as a slow-fill station. You come home at the end of the day, you hook it up to your home compressor unit, and then you let it fill up overnight. Get out the next morning, you've got 180 miles that you can drive onto. If you know you're just getting daily commuter, then we're going to have a problem. Then there's fast-fill stations. Fast-fill stations, the infrastructure for that is significantly more expensive, okay? Wilsonville has three slow-fill stations, one fast-fill station. The three slow-fill stations cost less than the one fast-fill station, okay? Excuse me. Fast-fill station, though, you can fill up a vehicle in about 10 to 15 minutes. It's not as fast as filling it up with gasoline, but it's significantly faster than a slow-fill natural gas station. And again, there are some federal grants that will help you with the infrastructure side, but those are getting ready to expire in 2013. And from everything I've read, there's no push to re-initiate those grant cycles. So, some other operational to consider. Where are you going to put your fueling station? So we took a very close look at our current facilities within Public Works and tried to figure out where would be a logical location if we were to implement something like this. We have a lot of logistical restrictions that would possibly make it not suitable for our current facility. These are some industry setback standards. They are not standards that have been adopted by the state or by our own city municipality. They're industry recommendations that would not preclude local municipalities from making these setback distances greater. So I just want to make that a note. The distances are there to make sure that whatever we decide to put in here, and the vehicles that we decide we're going to switch over to CNG...
We're going to switch to those.
That we don't have anything like that. Okay? My one little moment of levity there. So they're all there for safety's sake, and to make sure that it's not an imposition on the surrounding land uses. So this is the photograph of Wilsonville's fueling stations. The three compressors that you see on the left-hand side, they look like air conditioning units, those are slow-fill stations. The mast arm that you see, it's yellow there at the base, kind of extending up, those are the fueling hoses, and they basically back the buses up to those every night, hook it up to the slow-compressed system, and they fuel up overnight, and they get up the next morning and they do their route. Again, they know their routes, they know what's the range, there's no variability. The sphere that you see on the right there, and the multiple cylinders, that's the fast-fill station that they have. That sphere costs $65,000. Each of the slow-fill stations costs about $10,000 to $12,000. Okay? So you do get some convenience with the fast-fill, but you're paying for that convenience. All right. So this is our case study that we looked at, and based on the rationale that we were thinking of, in terms of fixed-route vehicles, that we know where they're going to be going, we took a look at our inventory, said what meets that criteria. So our utility billing vehicles was one thing that we thought of, and then our street sweeper was another thing that we thought of. And then what we did is we pulled all of our data for the last year in terms of fuel consumption, mileage, our rolling fuel costs that we're paying with each fill-up, and we took those numbers and extrapolated it into Wilsonville's current GGE unit cost. So a utility billing currently has a Ford Escape that they utilize. They're getting about 4,000 miles annually, and they're expending about $1,000 in fuel costs based on the fuel records for the last 12 months. So if you switch that over to a compressed natural gas vehicle, you're looking at about $500 an annual saving on just fuel costs. The upside is, or the downside on this, is your return on investment for that, that increased expenditure on the front side, you're looking at about 20 years before you break even on that investment. Okay? So maybe that's not the best deployment of that alternative. Comparatively, we looked at our street sweeper. Street sweeper gets about 4,300 miles annually. Okay? Runs every day that it can, five days a week. Some days it just can't, which is another issue. Our annual gasoline expenditures on that is about $14,000. On a GGE equivalent, we verified these numbers against City of Medford and their compressed natural gas street sweeper. They're saving about $6,000 a year in fuel expenditures. The upcharge for a compressed natural gas street sweeper versus a standard model is about $30,000. So your return on investment there, your break even, you're hitting that in about five years. We're, you know, we have a 1999 street sweeper in the inventory, so we're keeping these vehicles for quite a while. So there would be several years in which we would be getting funds returned into our investment, rather than just trying to hit that break even. So these are some case numbers that we ran for you, trying to give you a real-world scenario of what's out there within our current fleet and where there are some opportunities. So what are some of the limitations that we're currently facing that could keep us from moving in this direction? So we know CNG is best deployed when you know fixed route assets. For some of our Public Works vehicles that we have, where I've got them traversing all over the city, and I can't tell you what it's going to do one day versus another, it may not be the best opportunity to deploy that alternative. Setback requirements where we're currently located and some of the other facilities that we looked at, it's unachievable right now. I could not meet just the industry minimum standards. That's not, you know, verifying whether there are any other state or local municipality setback standards that are associated with that. The existing fleet facility we have right now, it's ill-equipped and unprepared to make the transition over to CNG. Now, if we wanted to pursue this alternative, my recommendation would be that we look at this holistically, and make some steps for our future operations facility, which will have our new fleeting facility associated with that. We worked that into the planning for that facility. We put it into our contracts for when we're going into design phase, we incorporate a fleeting facility, similar to what Wilsonville did, and look at it at that time. Right now, it's something, logistically, it's not achievable with the current locations that we're looking at. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions you may have. Feel free.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Okay. This is better than a night's movies for me. This was just... This is great.
What kind of movies you watching?
Was it a suspenseful movie or a comedy? Because...
I'm documentary.
No, 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 that would scare me. That would scare me. All right. Question number one out of 34. No. Now, this is kind of off of where you were going, but do we use right-turn philosophy here as opposed to left turns?
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
You know how you can make three right turns and make a left, rather than making, stopping and waiting at a left?
Three right turns equal a left, is the old saying, yeah.
Do we do that? No?
Okay. I'm just making the City of Portland guys do this now. Just see what it does.
Three right turns. We're not, you might work in a grid.
We're not in a grid. It's not a grid here. You might go six miles.
Three right turns here equal 180 degrees.
Good point. Okay. Are these, we're only considering new vehicles, not any conversions?
All the information that we've read, and spoken to several industry experts, both at Freightliner, that does a lot of the heavy-duty, long-haul vehicles, Wilsonville, City of Medford, everyone who's gone through this recommends one thing: don't do conversions.
Okay.
Okay? It's extremely costly versus just getting it made by the manufacturer, and the reliability is significantly less.
Okay, great. Did you talk to the school district about their plans for any, of looking at any of this, so we could do maybe a joint venture?
We've reached out to them, as well as our local solid-waste hauler and the county. We've reached out to all of them, and they haven't responded, but, you know, we do think that that would be, if we were looking, you know, holistically again, it really makes sense to have conversations with them. You know, depending on the site, there may be others that would be interested in that.
But that could really...
The thing to consider with the school district, because we did talk to them in some of the discourse for some information, they've put all their eggs in propane. So it's a different avenue. The problem with propane is propane is tied back to crude oil cost.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Whereas CNG is not.
Right.
And, you know, there's different discussions that you can have with different experts. If we're going to be looking at some, you know, locally sourced, clean alternative, doesn't burn as clean, it's not local, it's tied to crude oil indices, the fluctuations that you have associated with it, and I'll back it up, and you can see propane cost relative to fuel is, if you see my cursor up there, it fluctuates just as wildly as that. So if we're going on cost savings, you're not going to get the same bang as you would with CNG. If you're going on feel-good, environmental, then you're still not going to get that either. So CNG seems like a better alternative. The only other one that's not up here, because it's not a commodity that's traded publicly like these are, is electricity. And electricity is another very viable option.
Right. Okay. But I was just thinking about a cost savings when you're doing your compression stations and things like that. What is the forecast, do you know, for CNG availability in the future, and how far does that forecast go out?
We had some information that I didn't include it in here. CNG availability in terms of long-term cost projections is relatively flat for the next five-year projection. So they're budgeting, the 210 we're paying right now, they're thinking you're looking at a 5% to 10% differential across the next five years from that existing cost for the commodity. If anything, from some of the stuff we were reading from the Department of Energy, CNG costs may actually continue to spiral down, because all of the fracking that's occurring out west is actually driving that cost significantly down.
Okay, thank you. What's the vehicle life expectancy?
Well, it depends on your use. We have vehicles in our fleet that precede me going to high school, and they're still running quite well. I've, my city-assigned vehicles in 1999 Jeep Cherokee with 26,000 miles. So it really just depends on your usage, wear and tear that you do on the vehicles, and the purpose of the vehicle. Some of our heavy-duty trucks, we go through those, you know, much quicker than you would a vehicle that's assigned to maybe utility billing.
Okay, I guess what I'm getting at is, is there a longer life expectancy on these CNG vehicles?
Some of the information, there's anecdotal information, that because of the cleaner burning fuel, the compression, standard, or the compression of the mix within the cylinders and all that, maintenance cost is slightly less, and wear and tear is slightly less. But it's anecdotal information, I wasn't able to find anything that's substantiated through any sort of study.
Okay, thank you. And you kind of went over this one about ROI, so we've already done that one. And you've done this one too, so it's, what is the average life that the vehicles were currently using? So, thank you. I feel like I just have my own private little presentation. I'm just delighted, Doug.
Yeah, and I'm pleased you brought up the issue, too. Just, I got a couple of questions as well. One's a comment, one's a question. The question is, you're talking about 180 miles, so probably you're assuming automobiles.
Yes.
Street sweeper's probably not much concern, because they go shorter distances and so forth, but their energy consumption per mile is probably...
Significantly higher.
Yeah. But it's still probably, it's good for a day. I mean, you could fuel it up at night, and so that's not an issue.
Yeah, we wouldn't have an issue with that. We do have a concern with our discussions with the vendor, and with an individual we were speaking over at the City of Medford. Medford's significantly flatter than we are. We have a lot of steep hills here.
That's true.
And the big concern that we have is regarding torque. So you've got a street sweeper, which is heavy enough, and then you've got it filled, laden with street sweepings, which makes it heavier, and you start to traverse a relatively steep grade, what's going to be our loss on torque capability trying to go up that hill? It's still a question I don't have an answer for. It's something I'm still trying to get my head wrapped around. John and I have talked about it. Trying to see if I can get a trip down to Medford or do, and take a look at their sweeper.
I've been there, seen it, it's flat.
But, yeah, that's the only concern I really have with it.
The other comment I have are those people who are just concerned about fossil fuels in general. The point is, natural gas may be generated from crops as well, so, I mean, at some point in the future, that may be, in fact, the source of natural gas.
Well, there's a lot of natural gases just being collected at old landfill sites, just the burn-off process, and it's being reused as a commodity.
Tri-City, Tri-City produces it. Any other comments? Thank you, and I'm glad you raised the question.
Thank you.
That's great. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks very much.
For the next...
Can we get a copy of this?
It's loaded onto the, the copy of the presentation?
I can get that out to you tomorrow. Thank you.
For the next, for the next piece, I think we're going to have Jim Band speaking, but I'm going to invite somebody to come forward and sit up here, Elizabeth Russellwell. She's our coordinator for the Oregon City Together. I'm a member of that board, and dealing with issues of underage drinking, drug use. Of course, I guess drug use, no matter what age you're using it, it's illegal. And we've had discussions of what we're calling social hosting ordinances, and I think this is the equivalent, and James Band is going to speak to it. And I'm real pleased you came, and I hope you enjoy the presentations that preceded this, but I appreciate the time you've taken in participating in this discussion.
Good evening. I'm going to just kind of briefly start with the background of how, my understanding of how this came to all of our attention. And initially, the police department, as far as I know, was approached at the chiefs. There's a chiefs meeting that is held, and somebody from the county went and said to the chiefs, "Would you guys look into this idea of a social hosting ordinance?" I'm going to explain what it is. And what they were shooting for is to get all of the chiefs to agree to do it, so it's something that the entire county would be consistent in the way that they were approaching that. The chiefs have committed to that. I think you saw in your information, there was a draft copy, and that's a draft copy that the county had put together with some help. And that copy I got from Chief Don Johnson from Lake Oswego, who said to all the chiefs, "I'll take the steering wheel and kind of put something together," and this is, this is what they came up with, and we just tweaked it a little bit as a draft, putting our verbiage in. So, the, the first question, so what's a social hosting ordinance? There are, there's a couple aspects to what this would address. In the end, what I'm going to get at is, I think it's a good thing, and I'll tell you Anecdotally, I've been shocked having twin 18-year-old daughters who are 18, just out of high school, the number of parties that happen at houses, whether either there's a parent there and is completely aware of what's going on, and that's already addressed in ORS. Or they're allowing their 18-year-old, 19-year-old, whatever, to have a group of kids at their house drinking, even when they're not there. ORS does not address that. This would address that. I've been shocked, actually, at what I've seen and how prevalent this actually is in our community and in others. And obviously, if an 18-year-old's running the party, they don't really care if there's 15, 16, 17, or whoever is showing up. So essentially, what a social hosting ordinance does is it puts the onus of a party, and the fallout of a party, on the person in control of the party, or, and/or, the person who's leasing, so the property owner. So if it's your home and you own it, you're on the hook. If it's an apartment, and parties are being, are happening in an apartment, and the renter isn't dealing with it, at some point, I think after there's been two or three, the way that this was written up, then you can go, then we can go and cite the business, or, excuse me, the property owner, and say, "Look, this is what your renter is doing." And we've had great success with this in addressing drug issues in houses. Great, I don't know if you remember hearing about what happened in Rivercrest Park, but there was a drug house there that was a huge problem, and we dealt with that through an ordinance that the city has dealing with drug houses. And so what this really addresses is a lot of the livability concerns that ORS does not deal with. ORS being Oregon revised statutes. It takes care of minors who are drinking underage. ORS takes care of, if I'm a parent, or I'm in control of a property, and there's a party going on there, kids or adults, so it's either kids, period, who are drinking, or it's adults who are doing the list of all the things that you saw, the crimes from assault, menacing, harassment, public urination, noise ordinance violations, this sort of stuff. So it deals with both adult or parties that involve minors or juveniles. Juveniles being under 18, and, or minors being under 18, and then juveniles, they're 18, but they're not 21. And so if you're living in an environment where, or in a house, and there's a house that I'm getting a lot of complaints about right now, where this kind of stuff's going on, and it... on, and it, it allows us to deal with the way that that house is affecting the neighbors, which is something that ORS doesn't allow us to do right now. In addition to the parties that take place in a house and affect the neighbors who are around, DOI, other person crimes that we worry about with teenagers being at parties, and first thing to go with alcohol is judgment, and, you know, there's just a whole host of the bad things that happen at parties, which we all know about. One of the things that this kind of encourages, I think, is for people to know what their kids are doing. Some people have kind of an intellectual curiosity about what teenagers do, and I think some just kind of hope for the best. And I, I tend to not hope for the best with any teenager. I just think that it's better to just assume that they're up to no good. Well, not, not that they are up to no good, but essentially, and I think where, where this would really give the police department teeth is parents who may be kind of in the middle part of the bell of that equation we're talking about, that they kind of hoping for the best, if there's something going on, and we go to them and say, "Look, you may not be aware of this, but you can get cited, whether you're at the house or not." That's one of the biggest differences between the state law and this. State law says that the parent, whoever's in control of the property, has to be present to be cited. In this, you just need to be in, in charge of the property. And so, this would give us a lot of teeth, just in conversation. I think the majority of the work we could get done with this is just having it there. I don't think we'd have to cite a whole lot of people, but just the threat of citing it, the conversation that it would bring up in the community about how serious we take underage drinking and how serious, well, I'll say it another way. When we have people coming to us saying, "I'm sick and tired of this, these house parties that are affecting the whole neighborhood," right now, our answer is, there's, there's not a whole lot we can do. And I have specific examples right now. There's one in Kanema that's been our repeated problem. It'd give us something to do. I think I pretty much covered it. I don't know if, if you have any questions. Essentially, there's, there's several phases of it, if you look through it. It starts with a fine, it ends up progressing. Eventually, we can, the judge would eventually also assess damages, or whatever you want to call it, there'd be a fine based on how much staff time it took up. And sometimes, parties, a big, huge party takes a lot of our time, because we're, we're calling a bunch of parents and having them come get their kids. And, and another important thing that, that is in there, that I, just so you know, in fairness to whoever, the homeowner, the parent, whatever, would be, is there is a defense in this, that if they, if that parent finds out, they come home, there's a party, if they call 911 right away and say, "Hey, there's a party going on at my house, I'm trying to clear it out, can you come give me a hand?" We're not going to show up and cite them. It's an affirmative defense to the, to being cited for this, if, as soon as they have knowledge that they're having a communication with us, so. Ultimately, I think, I think it'd be great if, if our guests here weighed in, and if you have any questions for me, let me know.
Elizabeth, would you, would you all make some comments? And I've got something to say on behalf of Tiffany Hicks, too.
Oh, good. Thank you. I'm really pleased to be seeing this moving forward, and, you know, we have a strong commitment to doing what we can to advance some environmental-level strategies, and this is definitely a very effective one. I, one thing that, and maybe Tiffany mentioned this to you, one of the things that is a concern beyond parents hosting is young adults hosting their underage peers, and that's specifically a concern around the community college. So, that's something that's kind of on our radar. And then, of course, what's also quite interesting to me is how the Coalition Oregon City Together can be a collaborative partner in making this an effective strategy, you know, in terms of, you know, publicizing it. And we, right now, have some positive community norms work that we're doing to help parents think twice about providing to their kids or making it available to, you know, young ones, and we're hoping to be able to, you know, do more of that. And it would be a great opportunity, you know, to overlap in communication with the public on that front. And then, something I wanted to just, I, I'm not sure if I have the same draft, I'm working with the original Laco draft, but I am looking under the penalties in Section 2, there's a mention of treatment or rehabilitation of the offender, and I would just like to encourage a mind toward, you know, that kind of remediation opportunity as part of response. I think that some situations really call for that, and that's probably, those are my first few thoughts on this.
On the last point she makes, I just posed a question, is this usually something that has, comes out at the judicial level, or is it something that you can actually deal with at the, at the police enforcement level?
Well, I, I think it's both. One of the things that I like about this approach are the system we have with the, with the, our municipal court judge, and it would be great to get her way in on this, just in terms of, ultimately, my recommendation's going to be that we move forward, and, and what we should do is move forward, come up with a final draft, that we get some more input from like this, and then we'll bring that back in front of you. But one of those pieces, and she's really good about this kind of stuff, that we can kind of tailor it to our, our community, our community being the county, the whole county and all the other cities, and it is not often that we have something like this, that a bunch of cities are all committing to do the same thing, so it's, so it's universal.
Tiffany Hicks, her, her position is with the county on drug and alcohol, is she specifically with youth, is that right, or in general?
In general.
Yeah. And, yeah, she, I, I, she got ahold of me, I called her up, and then we had the discussion. She was mentioning the same issue. And then, one of the difficulties with the college, of course, it's a mix of ages, I mean, you have, you have people there 21 and over, and those that are under 21, but especially at the community college level, where you have a lot of high school students that are taking courses there at the, at the college, so you potentially could have juniors and seniors in high school being invited to some of these parties and so forth, so it's, it's a real problem that way, too. I like the way it's phrased, because one thing I've always been concerned about, if you're talking about underage drinking, you have a family that sits together as a family, and maybe the youth even participates in a glass of wine at dinner. Well, this, this is going to affect them. I mean, it affects only the issue in which things were there getting out of hand and so forth, and you're getting drunken behavior essentially, so, I mean, I kind of like this approach. We don't, we don't deal with some maybe family or cultural things that occur as part of their, of their own background, so this is one, one reason I, I like this particular approach. Any other que, I see Rocky Smith's on?
I was going to hit on the same topic. I think the partnership OC Together and the work that has been done, we've done some great, great things in this community recently, and one I was going to bring up with the municipal court judge was attendance court, which I think she's, she, you know, she's been extremely supportive of, and it's, it's being, it's really successful, so much so that it's, it's a great example of a program that was implemented that really didn't result in fining a lot of people, because the process itself is solving the, the issue, and I think this, this would be a very similar circumstance. We're just having this, or, this written on paper is, is going to change a lot of behaviors in itself. So, I think these two working together is really going to start changing some of these expectations that that core group has been working on, and it's, I think it's really exciting to see that that's beyond Oregon City level.
Mr. Ross?
I was just wondering how we're going to go about informing the public of this change?
Well, I, I, I know for us, we would do it a lot of ways. I, I think it's something that's great, would be great for us to go talk to the school, to the parents about, take to every one of our neighborhood association meetings, basically mention it every, every, every meeting that we go to, this is something that we would, that we would talk about. I think it would also be good for us, once everybody, you know, we can do a news release, I think it'd be great if we did it, we'd probably get more, more, more air, airtime if, once everybody has. And I know from talking, I talked to Don Johnson today, we're kind of waiting for the first city, and if, we might be that one. But once we all have, I think even the media would be a great, you know, if we could get one of the newspapers to do a story on, just for the parents to know as much as anybody else.
Steve?
But this is the kind of stuff to put on, you know, Facebook, we've got a lot of Facebook followers, put on our website, I think there's a lot of places that we could talk about this.
Great, thank you.
Elizabeth, thank you again. I know you're here from the very beginning, and I hope you found the rest of the presentations interesting.
Oh, I did, and I have lots of ideas to share.
Great, that's wonderful. Thank you for coming, I appreciate it. And Tiffany sends her regards, I mean, her apologies. And with that, we come back to the agenda.
Mayor?
Yes.
I believe Carol Polly's on.
Oh, Carol Polly, I'm sorry.
I'll keep it short. I was just going to say, I think this is a great tool, and it's wonderful to have something that we can actually do about that chronic problem. One quick question that I had is, would this also help solve problems like with neighbors, if they had chronic disturbances at the house and different menacing things with maybe other people's kids to their kids? And would it help code enforcement, too, with the problem of, you know, littering in their yard and that type of thing, with problems that have come up, that they really haven't had too much teeth?
The, the, the two caveat, well, yes, but.
Okay.
Yes, if.
Okay.
If it involves alcohol, and there's five or more people there.
Okay. So, those are the factors, they need, okay.
Yeah. So, in that sense, there've been some very specific, one of the things that, that happens every once in a while is, a landlord knows that somebody's, hasn't paid their rent three, four, five, six months, and they're waiting for the eviction process, and the landlord just kind of stopped caring. If we're going to them saying, "Look, you're going to have a lien, it's going to cost you money," because some landlords just simply aren't that concerned with getting people out of their property, and this would give us something to do where it's going to cost them financially, if they're not a little more motivated, to get the paperwork in and get, get those people evicted. And there's a very, very good example where somebody's, you know, lots and lots and lots of complaints in a big area, and those people are gone and some new ones just moved in, so this would take care of that. And I like that it addresses not just juveniles, too. I mean, that's a huge piece, but even, even if they're all adults and, and they're creating a livability problem, I like it for that reason, too.
Great, thank you.
I'm sorry.
I've got one more question. Is there a caveat in here that, like you said, the parents get so much, if they call immediately with the 911, what if the landlord is in the process of eviction and these things keep happening to where the, to the point where it escalates to their responsibility? Is there something like that for them?
You know, the, before it gets to that part, we are citing the, the people who are doing the deed, you know, whoever the person in there, that's one good thing about it, is we're going to whoever, even if they're not paying rent, if they're the one whose name is on the lease, they're still getting a, a fine. And ultimately, if they don't pay their fine, if they don't show up for court, they could end up in jail. So, we're going to have a lot, a lot of upfront ability to, you know, that, that's going to go a long ways with them, people don't like going to jail, and they don't like paying money out. So, I, I think that before we get to that point, you know, something, this is tailor-made for us to work with people and for the judge to work with people. There's, there's almost more, there's almost more warnings in here than I like, you know? It could almost be a little more iron-fisted, but just, just by its existence and the way that it's written, I think it's very fair, it's reasonable, but it, it would give us, it's, it's exactly what Rocky, Commissioner Smith said a minute ago. What we found with attendance court, it isn't so much the citations we write, it is the ability to write the citation, it's the warning letters. Those warning letters take care of half of these problems. The very first warning letter, when a police officer is showing up and saying, "Look, your kid's not going to school, and you better do something about it." Sometimes, what the benefit of that is, is the parent who's having a hard time parenting is saying, "Look, the cop's on my side." You know, sometimes we're helping affirm a parent who's having a hard time being the disciplinarian to a kid who's a little bit older, so a, a lot of the beauty of this is, is just the, the way that we can use it as a tool and
Prevent it.
Threaten with it is another way, but that's what it really is.
You were mentioning five or more people, that, but that, but it was just three people, and you had a young person there, and noise was being created, that's still a basis of the citation, right?
Well, this specifically says, defines an unruly gathering as five. We could make it three.
There goes your family reunion year. No, no, no. It's going to be, it's going to be, you know, it's going to be generated, it's going to be generated by a complaint. I mean, if they're, if they're not acting up, it's not going to be an issue, so I'm not concerned about that. The point is that, I, I think we ought to think about that, because if, one of our concerns, of course, is, is the issue not only of unruly behavior, but ultimate addiction. I mean, if we can hit these things early on in the game, we, maybe we can hit the youth before they get addicted, and that, and that's a major thing, and, you know, but it might not be the, might not be the minimum we want to think about, so that's something to give some thought about.
So, and one quick clarification, is alcohol and/or drug use paired with the five or more people?
It is mostly geared toward alcohol.
Okay.
But it's unruly behavior.
Because, the, the drug use aspect, first, first of all, drug use is already a felony.
It's covered in it.
In a million ways. And, and the using drugs in a house, that is already covered in another ordinance for us. So, we already basically have these teeth having to do with drugs. The, the house I mentioned at Rivercrest, that is because of, you know, if we do a search warrant, or it's all related to drugs, so this is, basically, it's different in other ways, but that stuff's covered already.
Great.
Okay. We have one more item here, and that's the use of solar panels in the McLaughlin Conservation District, and it's going to be Director Tony Concall, and maybe somebody else goes back to that?
Nope, I'm going to take a shot at it.
You're going to take a shot at it.
Thank you. A question was raised for some clarification about the ability to build, put solar panels on homes in the McLaughlin Conservation District. And the legislature passed House Bill 3516, which allows solar panels to be constructed on any dwelling unit in the state of Oregon, with the exception of if it's in, if it's designated, either on a local designation as a landmark or a national designation as a landmark, or it's in a national registered district such as Kanema. When the legislature was considering this bill, the discussion of conservation districts came up, which is what McLaughlin is, and it was, it was, it was excluded from the language. So, if you have a non-designated home in the McLaughlin Conservation District, you can put a solar panel on your roof outright. If you are a locally or nationally designated home, landmark, in the Conservation District or anywhere else in the city, then you would need to go through a, a review. And our current policy is if the solar panel's located out of the, out of the view, essentially hidden, it would be a staff-level review based on the guidelines, and if it's in a visible location, it would be reviewed by the Historic Review Board. So, that's kind of a quick, quick outline of, of what the regulation says.
Any questions?
So, Kanema's, the expectations are a lot different than McLaughlin neighborhood. So, in new, in new, a new house in, in Kanema would still, I mean, that would be still addressed through HRB anyway, right?
Any, if it's a new house or an existing home, and if they want to include solar on it in the Kanema Historic, National Historic District, that goes through a, a review.
Right.
That's correct.
I was just, yeah, I think now I understand the difference, because there was calling out different, that I did, well, yeah. out different, that I did, well, you answered it.
It's a different, you know, it's either you're not in a district, you're in the conservation district.
I think the problem is, is that a lot of people in Oregon City see McLaughlin neighborhood and Canema as the same thing, and they're not.
Correct.
You know, whether that's good or bad, but...
Yeah. And you're well aware of this. The highest level of review is in Canema, because it's the National Historic District. McLaughlin is our second one, because it's a conservation district, where we address new development, large additions, and then you have the rest of the city. In terms of review, that would happen.
All right.
With that, Mr. Fraser.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you very much. So I have a couple of things tonight on my reports. You probably have heard that 99 is going to be closed, there's going to be some construction out there. I have a little flyer I want to hand out, and it has a map, in case you haven't seen the big sign, but you probably have. They have signs out there now. And then, I have some really exciting news. Eric Underwood reported to me late this afternoon that the state has approved the city's application for vertical housing tax zone.
Great.
So, and just for a reminder, that includes all of the area of our downtown, out to the Cove. So, the Cove project, or the likelihood of it, or the ongoing negotiations we're having with them, might have been the impetus, but it's probably not the end of the game, because we know that we'd like to see vertical housing in other parts of the city that are a pretty good stretch of the legs from the Cove. And we're excited, because we think that this could be the incentive that kind of leads us down that path. It's also good timing, because I know the commission has talked in the past about a quiet zone, and we actually have, I think, that coming up on one of our work sessions, as you know, that's, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars for our city. The commission, the last time you talked about this in one of our retreat settings, was the wisdom, the prevailing wisdom was, well, that's, we're interested in doing it, but we don't want to actually spend the money until we have a developer ready to make an investment. And so, you're into that chicken/egg thing. I think what this does, this tax credit program is, it gives us a greater likelihood that sooner rather than later, we'll have a developer interested. So, that's great news. I want to thank Eric Underwood for his work on that. Good job.
Thank you.
Also, John Lewis has a couple of exciting things, positive things, that Public Works is doing for the community, and things they're involved in. And I would like him to give us a short announcement on downtown alley open house, and also the Clackamas River water cleanup program. And here's some more things to hand out.
So, we're planning an open house for tomorrow at, it's actually in the alleyway between 8th and 9th, between the Bush Building and the Orton Building, from 6:00 to 8:00. The alley project, this is an important project that came through urban renewal, I would say, years ago, actually. And there was some funding set aside to do some design work for those alleyways. So, that work has progressed. We're looking at the utilities in the alleyways, both between 7th and 8th, and 8th and 9th. And we're bringing some design concepts, I wouldn't say a lot of design concepts, we're bringing forth design concept ideas, so that you can kind of see some of the things that we're thinking about, and some of the ranges of costs that might be associated with those kinds of improvements. So, the only challenge here is, we're in conflict with the Natural Resource Advisory Board meeting, which is at 7:00. So, if you want to get to both of those meetings, you'll need to get to this one by 6:00. And there's not a lot of natural resources in the alley, so I'm not sure that that's a huge conflict.
Not yet.
But, anyway, so, yeah, come and take a look. We want to hear from the downtown businesses about how those alleyways, how important they are to the downtown, to the Main Street programs, and how we might extend some of the improvements that we've already done in the area. So, come for that. The other one is, yes, this Down the River cleanup on the Clackamas River, everybody knows where the Clackamas River is, right? So, this is a pretty important event. It's an event the city's participated in the past. So on Sunday, September 8th, 2013, the We Love Clean Rivers, in partnership with the Clackamas River Basin Council, will host the 11th Annual Down the River Cleanup on Oregon City Clackamas River. So, the city has actually sponsored a raft. We can fill that with people from our city, or we can just sponsor the raft and let the event coordinators fill that. So, at this point, we've said we would like to fill that raft with, you know, either elected officials from the organization, or city staff, it really doesn't matter. The first year, we did do something like that. The second year, we just kind of ran out of time, and hadn't seen a lot of interest. But it's kind of a fun deal, I've done it. You really only clean up about a mile of the Clackamas River. They segment it up into several pieces, and they've got, in the past, they've had air-conditioned buses to get you to the segment of the river that you need. And then, you pick up trash, or whatever you might find. And I understand there's some projects, I thought, did we just hear about a project, where they're planning to try to utilize some of that for artwork around town. So, it's kind of a cool, comes full circle. And it's been great, there's a lot of participation, and I think they have, then they take you back to Barton Park, and they've got food and drink up there, and good times.
At what time is it?
Let's see, I want to say, well, I think you have to be there at like 9:00 to get kind of registered and get assigned to your boat.
And where is it that we?
Up at Barton Park.
John, you have room for five or more people on that raft?
Five or more people on the raft. So, let me know if you're interested.
Great.
That's all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Well, thank you very much. And with that...
Wait, no, no, I have to say something.
We said five or more, five or less, five or less.
Can I talk?
Yes, you may.
I just, I'm so excited tonight, and I don't think I'm going to be able to sleep, because we've got the alley thing, we've got the solar panels, and we've got the fuel-efficient vehicles. I'm just over the top excited. Thank you.
Don't forget Eric.
Oh, Eric, sorry.
What about Jim?
The commission actually didn't say this, but we, I think it's all understood here, that we will be bringing many of these items back to you for a future actual council meeting.
Right, it's just really, really great, thank you.
Yeah, I want to say a quick thank you, too, to the city staff for keeping things going on Main Street during the interim Main Street manager, with the open house and the vertical tax credit, and just all of that is fantastic. So, thank you.
Commissioner Pauli, I know you're on their board. I also want to give a shout-out to John Southgate, the interim manager. He's been really proactive in meeting with me, and keeping involved with our staff, and we've really appreciated his experience and wisdom, and I think it's the right person for the right job at the right time, so...
He's doing a great job. We just had a meeting today, and we are going to host a Main Street program review from Sherry Stewart, the coordinator for all the Main Street programs, helping with tools in Oregon. And so, the process and work goes on, and he is doing a great job as an interim.